He has to why it's hard to read his too because he has those Mickey Mouse hands. Yes, I negotiated that with my union.
I give it back.
He deserves every bit of it.
He looks up to me on that side. It's out of place.
Oh yeah. It's amazing.
He's got more for us.
He'll be following Mr. Cherry's lead.
Can I still not ask questions?
Would you please do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. Gabori?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Som?
Here.
Eight here, zero opposed. With Counselor Francis's resignation from the town council to report to his new position as state representative for the 42nd district, congratulations Mike, he's in the back. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for a candidate to fill the vacancy on the town council.
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Thomas Malone, Republican, 12th Ferry View Drive, Gales Ferry, to be a member of the 22nd Leged Town Council, filling a vacancy left by Counselor Mike France for the period ending December 7th, 2015.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
I move the nomination to be closed and seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded and closed the nominations. Roxanne, would you call the roll? To close the nominations.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som? Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. At this time, we vote to appoint Mr. Tom Malone as member of the 22nd Town Council. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Congratulations. You were one of a long, not a long line, but probably a long line of former board members who have become town council. So you bring with us, you bring to us a lot of good background. I also don't know if you were aware, but on Memorial Day, you have to wear a Hawaiian shirt. And toward the Christmas sing-along, you have to wear antlers. Were you aware of that?
No, but I was told if I did this, I would get one of those Leged Town pins.
You will get one.
That's what I'm in.
Oh, you're easy.
My son has one. He got one from, yeah, Mayor Allen when he became an Eagle Scout. You know, I've been really envious of that for a long time.
Well, we'll be sure you get one. It will not be lighted like our noses were, but we're good to go. Okay, so at this time, Town Clerk Patricia Riley will administer the oath of office.
I, Thomas Malone.
Do I solemnly swear?
Do I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
The United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Connecticut?
Of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue?
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof?
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law?
According to law.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of Town Council?
Of Town Council.
So does my ability?
So does my ability.
To help me out?
To help me out.
Congratulations.
Look at that.
Oh geez, easy come, easy go. Thank you, Paddy, for coming out tonight. So with the vacancy, our committees shift around a bit, and I've asked Tom to serve on the Finance Committee. I've asked Mr. Allen to move into the Chairman's spot for Finance. We have a number of liaisons open. In the past, the Chairman of Finance, that was their only job. But when Mike became Chairman of Finance, he also did a whole lot of other stuff. So I've only asked Tom to fill his place on the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, but wanted to let everyone know I do have openings, or we do have openings, on the Conservation Commission, the Historic District Commission, and the Pension Board. So if anybody has an interest in those liaisons, if you would let me know after the meeting, that would be great. At this turn, are there any residents or property owners who wish to address the council? Yes?
Hi there, my name is Julia Cronin, 12 Aaron's Way. I also serve as the Chairman of the Board of Education. I just wanted to take this moment to thank the Town Council and volunteers of the Town Council and employees of the Town Council for everything to contribute to our presentation as well as the question and answer session at the town meeting on Monday night. Specifically, I'd like to identify Roxanne Mayer, Marsha Kenko, who are both employees of the town, Steve Juszczyk, the Chair of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, and of course Chairman Davis and Mayor Adolico, for all the support that they've given to the Board of Education. So many thanks to all of you.
Thank you. Any other property owners or residents wish to speak? Mr. Cherry?
Good evening. Mike Cherry, I will drive, I'm also Chairman of the Planning Commission. First, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with last presentation, the town meeting on the building project for the school. Pretty good turnout, good article in the paper today. Steve Juszczyk's made some points about how our buildings are approaching 50 years old when somebody was amazed that we had let them degrade to this point. I don't think they've degraded, and I think it's important that people realize that what's been proposed is to renovate the buildings we have, not to tear them down and start over. So I think Board of Ed, the Town Council, everybody involved, they're excellent stewards of our tax dollars, and I congratulate them for that. I have some sad news. Dr. Ken Coe has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission due to health reasons. Some of you are aware of that, some of you aren't. If we dug and found pictures from the original Town Council, you'd find Dr. Coe's picture there. He's been involved with the Planning Commission. You know, we reference things like the Tri-Commission Report. He was one of the authors of the Tri-Commission Report. He's done a couple of plans of conservation and development, served almost from the time we formed the Planning Commission and continued on with the Planning and Zoning Commission. His quiet demeanor, his sage advice, his kicking me under the table when it was required, are going to be missed and these may be very difficult to replace. So we are looking for appropriate people that would be willing to fill his term and continue to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Both Town Committees, Democrat and Republican Town Committee, are looking. Anybody who's interested, unaffiliated, please let us know. It's a vital position and has a real influence on the town. Third reason why I'm up here is on the item you have at the end of your agenda, the Leged Administrators Association contract. Last time we talked about it, I was a little impregulous that we looked at 2.5 percent raise for the highest paid people in our schools. I think the community supports the people that work for it, but we shouldn't elevate them above where we are. At that time, I talked about Social Security raises being 1.7, 1.8, military being 1, there's just 2.5. There's like point out that our DRG is averaging 2.5, and we ought to be looking there. Well, you throw acronyms around and I go and look up and see what they are. DRG was an acronym for District Reference Groups. It replaced DRG, which I don't have any idea what the heck that was. But we're in DRG 4. DRGs by the research pool that they published when they did it, it's a classification system which districts that have public school students with similar socioeconomic status need are grouped together. We talked a little bit at the town meeting, at least I did, about where the state figures out our cost share, and that comes from, a little bit from DRGs, but it comes from adjusted equalized net grandness per capita. So if I go look at the adjusted net equalized grandness per capita for our DRG, and I look at where Leged sits in that DRG, we are the last community in that DRG. Everybody in that DRG has a higher per capita income than Leged. And I ask that you consider that. And I also realize that at this point, there's little we can do to change the contract. It's been approved by the Board of Ed, it's been approved by the membership of the association. But I guess I would ask, as a taxpayer, who looks out for my interests? State law says we should do some things we didn't do this time, and all I ask is that as we go forward and negotiate contracts that those negotiating the contracts, holding meetings to find out what the town can afford and what the numbers really mean. I will, I made a copy, it's an edited copy. I went in and took the equalized net grandness, the population per capita income, and developed the adjusted equalized net grandness per capita as of December 14th from the Connecticut State Department of Education Division of Finance and Internal Operations that sold Leged at the bottom of our DRG. And I will give that to you. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Are there any other residents that would like to speak to the council? Or comment to the council? Okay, any committee, commission, or board reports? Are there any comments from town councillors? Yes?
I would just like to thank Board of Ed for the presentation that they did as well. I thought it was outstanding. You guys took the time and effort, put it together very, very well. I think the response was the same, that it was very well done. I also, I'm happy to see that people that weren't able to make it to the meeting took the time to put together a list of questions that they had regarding the facilities, both current and potentially future. And a lot of information has been made available on IQM2, and people are using it. I think that's great.
Any other comments? Mr. Eichelberg?
Just a note, on Sunday, I was traveling on Long Cove Road towards Gales Ferry, and I got to the intersection of Vinegar Hill, and the car in front of me, you know, it's a three-way stop there. The car in front of me decided that it wasn't a three-way stop and just drove right through and continued on Long Cove Road. So just a reminder, that is a three-way stop. The octagonal red signs are clearly visible, so keep that in mind.
Thank you. Mr. Gabori?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit to what Councillor Allen was saying. I thought the townspeople who spoke at the meeting the other night were, in my experience, exceptionally well-prepared with their questions. There seemed to be, by and large, a real thorough understanding, and I think that's a tribute to the people taking an interest in getting the information. But I also think it points to the abundance of information and the clarity of the information that was available for the town from the Board of Ed. So it was, I think, one of the most pleasant evenings at a town meeting that I can remember in my 40-plus years of attending town meetings in Leged. And it was also one of the most encouraging because of the preparation everybody had made.
Yes.
Our police lieutenant, Mike Finkelstein, is retiring next month after 20-some-odd years of service, and I'd like to thank him for his years of public service, and I wish him well in his next endeavor.
Thank you. Do you agree?
My only comment is that, you know, I currently received the email from Mike about the resigning of Ken Coe due to health concerns, and I wish him all the best and hope for the speedy recovery for him. I'd like to thank him for all his years of service to this town, as a volunteer between the council and on serving on the Planning and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any other comments? Okay, I have a couple. I agree with everyone else about the meeting last night. My favorite comment was Mr. Kilpatrick, when he said, "I'm a Republican and I support this project." Because that's exactly my comment would have been, is I'm a Republican and I support this project, so. The newspaper, I try not to read the comments in the newspaper, I really do try, but sometimes I can't help myself. And there was the article about a week ago about the building project, and somebody made the comment, when referring to tearing down the Leged Center School, or what are we going to do with the Leged Center School, made a comment, "Look at the mess in Gales Ferry with the rotting school still standing." And I couldn't help myself. I never comment, or rarely comment on comments in the day, but I just had to. At any rate, I hear that more often than I would like to, that the building is falling down, it's rotting, it's whatever. So if anybody thinks that about the Gales Ferry School, I would certainly invite them. I'd be happy to give a tour. I know Mark, the mayor's assistant, would love to give a tour because he is a big supporter and has helped us a lot with that project, so. Gales Ferry School, Gales Ferry Landing is a viable property in town, and I hope we can dispel those rumors about it being a rotting school. My final comment is Fred called me a little bit ago, and he had some, he had this idea which reminded me of a year ago when I talked about bold ideas, and how we needed to really be thinking about some bold ideas due to economic conditions, et cetera. And several of you have come up with bold ideas. And when I was listening to Fred talk, it reminded me again that it's been a year, and I thought I would give my bold idea speech again, but I'm really not going to do that. But I would add something, that in order to have a bold idea, sometimes you also have to be very brave, because sometimes bold ideas are not real popular. So while you're thinking of your bold ideas for this year, add the bravery piece, because that can maybe move us forward. Review and approval of minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 10th. Any comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Communications are on the IQM2 portal. I don't believe there were any referrals. Subcommittee reports, Admin, Mr. Eichelberg?
The Administration Committee met earlier this evening. We moved forward several recommendations for appointments, and that was the essence of our meeting.
Any questions for Admin? Mr. France?
I'm going to cover this mic.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Finance met last Wednesday, and we had a special meeting tonight. It was quite a welcoming committee I had for my first finance meeting last week with a full house. We had actually a really nice discussion of sorts. There were a number of people that were out to voice their concerns about consolidation of animal control facility. So we listened a lot, we provided some information when it was warranted, and more information will be forthcoming when it's available, and we made that very clear at the meeting. And everything else that was on the agenda from that meeting last week is on the agenda tonight, and then the special meeting tonight we had is also on the agenda tonight regarding an emergency repair for the heating system.
Any questions for Finance? IT?
Information Technology met last Tuesday. We reviewed the committee, the MIS Director's report. The MIS Director also reported regarding the town website. This year is now in the process of training the Land Use Assistant Cathy Springer and the Senior Senator Director Lauren Rapp to update, how to just update the town website so that they can keep their force into the website up to date. We continued our discussion implementation of the reading room, and it was discussed that information regarding the upcoming $65 million project for the school consolidation plan, that would have been an ideal place to go put that. So we're working with Regina to get that finally up and running. And then later on this evening, Roxanne had also sent out an email that maybe the upgrade that's going on in the parking lot right now, with the photos for what's worth, putting the curtain drains to support the installation of the police facility, that that would also be an ideal spot if you put that information as well. Other than that, everything else that we discussed is on our agenda for tonight.
Any questions for IT? Land Use?
Land Use also met last Tuesday. We discussed ongoing with the Leged Town Senate Committee, noted that they have signed a contract with Kent Cross Land Cave Architecture for design services for continued upgrades to the Leged Center area regarding with the half a million dollar steep grant, where they were waiting on further information from Chad Cross. The other item was on our agenda for tonight, and then Counselor Allen had discussed that he was going to meet with a developer in Hartford about a potential solar project at the wastewater treatment facility. Some possibility it's maybe something there. We're also going to investigate the possibility of alternative power sources or uses at other town facility or lands as well. And that's my report.
Any questions? Liaison reports, I'll start to my right. Mr. Gabori?
This is a report on the Board of Education meeting of January 7th. From the Superintendent, Mrs. Patterson, we heard that starting at the first meeting of each month going forward, we will hear from student leaders, probably from LHS, something I'm looking forward to hearing. There was a presentation by Whitsun's Food Service, which provides the food for our schools in town, gave a brief history, and as I said, provided a number of foods. After careful consideration, I can attest to the quality of the egg rolls. They pointed out that there's a variety of fresh foods available at lunches, including some produce from our own agri-science department, and something I would encourage people to do who are interested in the nature of food at our schools. They offer an interactive website, which has menus, nutritional information, information regarding allergens and so forth. Program will be expanding, and the district is hoping that the building project will enable us to expand hot lunches as well. Under Board of Ed member comments, we had LHS band concert coming up this Friday, January 16th. And congratulations were offered to three different LHS athletes who were the day athlete of the year in their sports. I think having three in one season is really unusual and really to be commended. And the Holiday Choral Concert was outstanding, and Les Mis rehearsals have begun. The Facilities Committee will be doing a comprehensive energy audit after the referendum. The committee also discussed possible combined services with the town, and the Finance Committee's met to discuss elements of budget. Business Manager reports, very busy time of the year with budget prep and our W2 reporting. Information items came from the Principals of Leged Middle School and Leged High School regarding budget preparation. Principal Pomeroy from the middle school said his goals were to sustain existing programs, implement Common Core, revise social development program, and initiate technology replacement cycle without actually expanding what we have. Most of our hardware is quite old, performance has been compromised. The middle school budget request for next year represents a 2.5% decrease over the current year in the areas over which the principal has control. Mrs. Fagan from the high school, the high school principal, explained that her budget request is about 1.4% below the current year's budget. She pointed out that there are many, many items which are no options, such as membership fees, which are particular to high schools and rarely to the other schools in the district. Under unfinished business, the contract for the Leged Administrators Association was approved after presentation and discussion. The salary increases are slightly below state and regional administrator increases. There are other changes, such as in bumping language and healthcare. There's a healthcare projected savings of $16,700 in the new contract, and the additional costs of the contract each year were $42,000 in the first, $38,000, $38,000, and this covers the three-year contract, which was approved unanimously. And under new business, again, Principal Pomeroy spoke to the board about the upcoming Leged Middle School Gettysburg trip, which is just so tremendous, I can hardly keep myself from returning when the kids go each year, having been a number of times myself, and it was, as it should be, approved unanimously. That's my report. At that point, excuse me, the board entered into executive session for a matter concerning the potential employment of a payroll clerk. And that's my report.
Is there any questions from Mr. Gabori? Any other liaison report?
WPCA? WPCA conducted a special meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 16th. They discussed the November meeting minutes, which were incomplete and did not contain vote counts taken on individual issues, so the WPCA did not vote to accept the minutes, commenting on the fact that the taking of minutes is and has been in transition for some time. The WPCA noted that the wastewater treatment facility has been approved by the Town Council, and the Permanent Municipal Building Committee had referred project management of the upgrade to the WPCA. They discussed two ratepayer requests. One, a ratepayer's contention that they did not use water they were billed for, despite the fact that the meter showed the usage and the ratepayer admitted they were watering their lawn. A commercial ratepayer who questioned their billing arrangements for condos association. No action was taken to reduce either customer's bill, and the review officer, who is the Chair, will respond to both customers regarding the WPCA's decisions. The Chair will also respond to Mr. Tom Howick regarding his request the preceding month for relief from his water bill with a credit reflecting a lower and more accurate per gallon rate than he was charged. If you recall, you may not, we had to use water to flush lines, and Mr. Howick owns the company and is contracted with the owns the company and was contracted to do the work, and he felt that he was required to use too much water, which his contract required that he pay for, buy from the town. But, uh, the town's problem is that we buy the water too, so we're not in a position to, to give it away. Uh, in other matters, the wastewater treatment plant supervisor reports the facility is awaiting final approval from DEEP, based on DEEP's review of the facility upgrade plan. Uh, the WPCA reviewed and voted to approve the customer handbook, which has been developed by WPCA member Terry Jones. Mr. Jones has put a lot of work into this handbook, and it's long overdue and, and very welcome. Also good news, Grattan Utilities reported that less than 20 accounts remain on the cross connection inspection list, out of the first 100, who received a letter about the water being shut off for non-compliance with the cross connection inspection process. The next round of customer notifications will be, it probably has begun now, with a letter to approximately another 150 customers, so that's going very well. That has really turned, that situation has turned around significantly from what it began. CDR McGuire Group says they're waiting on the state so they can complete their work on the wastewater treatment facility upgrade, and the WPCA is gonna check with McGuire, regarding exactly who is waiting for who and why this, you get it. So, uh, that's been our experience with McGuire. Um, the WPCA discussed the proset, the progress of demolition on Highland's Water Tank, reporting that demolition will require lead paint sampling prior to work being started. Several methods for obtaining samples were debated, more information will be gathered about that. That's the water tank on Gallup Hill Road that, that needs to come down because it's no longer in use. Um, accounts receivable increased significantly in December. There was discussion about what might be the cause for the increase, and acknowledgement that perhaps not everyone was used to paying monthly instead of quarterly. Our trend was down, and suddenly it's up. Finally, the regular meeting was adjourned, and the annual meeting was convened, of which Ed Lynch was elected as Chair of the WPCA, Sharon Wadecki as Vice Chair, Emily Smith as Secretary, and the meeting scheduled for 2015 was approved. And Roxanne, if I could ask you a favor?
I can break up the picture.
Show the picture. Because we have, until tonight, with Mr. Malone's appointment as a Town Council, we had, um, a full WPCA, and I just wanted to introduce them to you. So I'm not gonna crane my neck, give me a second to get this picture up. Um, going from left to right, you'll see Emily Smith, then Mr. Malone, and then Terry Jones. Uh, Ed Lynch is in the center as Chair, Munir Tupik, uh, who is, uh, he actually works for, uh, Norwich Public Utilities, has been right out of the gate a great ad asset. Uh, Stan Juber, who, uh, has long-term familiarity with WPCA, as well as Sharon Wadecki, who was once the liaison to the WPCA, and Mr. Mike Cherry, who, um, is, seems to know everything, read everything, and has, he, you know, he was our research, research guru for WPCA, planning, zoning, and many others. So this is, I just have to tell you, this is a really great WPCA. So, thank you. That's my report.
Any questions for WPA, for our liaison? Yes.
Uh, Bill, is, is Grattan set up with like online bill pay for, for water at this point?
Online bill pay? You can pay with a credit card. Um, they're also making collections calls to people who don't. So, and that's, of course, the first question that we asked, was if, uh, receivables are going up, why? And are we making collection calls? And they are, they're also putting leads on.
I think you can pay by phone, too.
You can pay by phone? You can, you can pay just about any way you would, I think even PayPal?
Yeah. They're taking, they'll take bags of pennies if you bring them.
I can see the Russians flying, telling it now.
Any other questions? Any liaison reports to my left, um, Mrs. McGrathen?
Uh, okay. The Ledyard Regional VNA or CPR classes to townspeople, and the next one is February 11th.
Any other liaison? Yeah.
The, uh, the LHS met on the 6th of this month, and they welcomed two new members, Corey Reed and Craig Bigger. Uh, so welcome aboard, guys. Bulk of the meeting was, uh, spent discussing the five lot subdivision at 800 Long Grove Road. It's a 35 acre piece of land next to Nathan Lester. Uh, 25 acres will remain open, which will butt the Nathan Lester property, which would make that kinda nice for walking and hiking and stuff. Lot one will remain the mobile home park that you can see from the street, and lots two through five will share the common driveway extending further back into the lot. Uh, the subdivision was, let's say approved, but endorsed at the wetlands level, goes on to planning and zoning after that and other committees. Um, the lots two and four will have to come back for individual review. The whole division was endorsed, but lots two and four will still need further review when those are developed. Uh, they're gonna have their red changes, there'll be a special meeting on January 27th at 6:30, uh, in this building to discuss their changes. Uh, shortly after that, they held their annual meeting, in which they set their schedule for the upcoming year, and looked at officers. Basically, nothing changed. Everything's the same. Um, I've been talking with Brian Pepin, and, uh, shit can gears here for a second, Emergency Services. I've been talking with Brian Pepin, he's the, uh, union president for the firefighters, and he is suggesting that we hire a fifth full-time firefighter to minimize the risk to the four full-timers we have now. Uh, he says that 75% of the time, there's only three people between the two firehouses, and sometimes he responds by himself. Now, this is shaping up to be an expensive year, so the man's gonna, well, how are we gonna pay for this fifth guy? Well, there's a SAFER grant available, uh, which is an acronym for Staffing for Inadequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. And basically, it provides money for towns, municipalities to staff firehouses. So that's something that I'm sure Rochelle's looking into. I haven't been able to talk to him yet about this. But I'm sure he's, I'm sure he's on board. The renovations at the animal control building are just about done. There's still needs of door cut between the office and the kennel area. Right now, they have to go outside and come back in again. Uh, but it's up and running operational, and it looks fantastic. The work there is, uh, was, uh, was quality. Uh, as far as the, the ACO, uh, regionalization was going on, like Federals talking about, we really don't have a lot of information at this point, we're still looking into all the little details. Uh, but what I can tell you is that, uh, I went to the, to, went to the prison today to look at the actual site, where it's gonna go, and it is, uh, it's an ideal lot for building. It's flat, it's cleared, there, there's nice access to it. As you're, it's going the road to the prison, the lots to the left-hand side, there's a couple halfway houses right there. Um, the sex offender site is way up the hill, out of range from where this is gonna be, and it's gonna be a privacy fence between the prison and the actual proposed facility. This water sewer on-site, the only glitch is that right in the middle of this proposed location, it's about one-third of an acre that the prison does not own. It's privately owned. So, we have that hurdle to overcome, if this goes forward. Um, there's, um, and one of the confusing things that was, that's going around town, I wanna clear up tonight, is there's a, a group here in town called Ledyard Chain. It's a small nonprofit group run by Ledyard citizens for Ledyard citizens. Uh, people that are not able to care for the pets the way they should be, this group helps them out financially with food. Uh, for example, we had a house fire here in town when the duck at Valley burned, they needed a thousand dollars to pay for the medical bills. Well, this group was able to raise the money in a matter of hours. It was fantastic. Also residents that applied for food baskets at holiday time also needed pet food as well, and they provided food for 87 families. So that's kinda the things that the Ledyard Chain does. They're not physically tied to Ledyard Animal Control in any way. Uh, yeah, they hang out, they talk to each other, but that's the end of the relationship with that. And that's my report.
Any questions? Mr. Marshall, I appreciate you giving us the update, because I've read some things that are so totally wrong, um, in regards to the regional ACO facility, so I appreciate your, um, efforts in trying to clarify some of those things, because I could give you a whole list of things that I've read or heard.
Oh, I know, I, I hear about this daily, but the, the best thing for people to do, if you have questions, concerns, ideas, is contact the mayor's office, um, 'cause they're really spearheading this project, and they have the up-to-date, most current information. What you're hearing on Facebook and around town is second and third hand and not probably accurate, so you'd best guess to contact the mayor's office directly.
Again, I appreciate that. Um, any other comments? Uh, report of the mayor?
Okay, thank you Chairman Davis. Uh, the town is negotiating a lease right now with Ledyard Congregational Church for use of the former town hall, uh, and that, uh, area, that, that building would be used for a food locker, the Ledyard Food Locker, uh, and the transition would be later this year. Uh, the lease is being reviewed by the town attorney, and will then be brought to the Town Council to authorize the mayor to, uh, sign that lease. Uh, you may have noticed when you came to the town hall, uh, this evening, uh, work has begun in earnest on the police building project. Uh, the current work that you're seeing is the installation of a rather large curtain drain that'll go across the back of what was formerly the, uh, Ledyard Fire, how, uh, Fire Department property, and that's part of the, uh, really part of preparation for installation of the septic system. Uh, if all goes per plan, and so far, nothing has, uh, we expect to see, uh, the building and the site construction hopefully starting by early summer, because after that drain is installed by February 1st, and hopefully sooner than that, uh, we'll be monitoring the groundwater, uh, uh, through the rainy season, which is the 1st of February through the end of May. Southeastern Area Transit, or SEAT as we know it, has posted a survey on Facebook. I would say I posted it there, but nobody would believe that, so I'll say SEAT posted it there. Uh, I would encourage citizens, whether or not you use the SEAT system, whether or not you ever have used it, uh, to go on the, on Facebook and take the survey, it, it'll only take you a few minutes. I think the more input that we can get to that, uh, the better. Uh, there's been some changes in the SEAT, in SEAT administration. Uh, the CEOs of the town are now seated as board members, and so they're doing a lot of reevaluation about SEAT, the services that are provided. Uh, if you live in Gales Ferry, you probably see it more, more commonly, and certainly in other places in the region. Uh, but we wanna make sure that the service is provided that's, that's really required, and that suits, uh, all the towns, but specifically, in our case, Ledyard. So again, uh, please do that, give us a wide range of ideas on public transportation. Uh, the town has hired a new highway superintendent, Rob Gerda, he is a town resident, and, uh, so you will be seeing someone new there, that position. As Councilor Marshall mentioned, Lieutenant Finkelstein, Lieutenant Michael Finkelstein has announced his retirement after 25 years in the Ledyard Police Department. Uh, Mike has and, and is a dedicated part of our police department, uh, and as the, uh, as the executive officer of the police, the highest ranking officer of our police department, uh, he was a trusted advisor to me for the past three years. Uh, we're in the process now of pursuing, filling, uh, that position. Uh, town hall department heads will be submitting their budget proposals to me this coming Friday. I have given them direction, kind of taking off, uh, the direct, letter of directive from the council, that there be no new personnel or new initiatives unless they directly represent efficiencies or shared or consolidated services. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Yes.
Mayor, could you expand on the, the moving of the food locker? Cause I've been getting a lot of comments from residents as to why we're taking it from a heated lit facility with personnel to a building that needs all of that still.
Sure.
Can I explain? Is the, could I have a brief analysis, while I let you?
Okay, thank you. I, I've done that before, met hopefully every purview, uh, and, uh, but I will do it again. Uh, earlier, uh, early in the summer, uh, the Congregational Church approached me. Uh, they, as most of you know, they had a, uh, nursery school for many years at the church, and, uh, that school, uh, ceased operations last year. Uh, they've been looking for a ministry that they could do for the town, and they approached me about, uh, taking over the food locker specifically. Uh, we've had many discussions over the summer, we looked at it, and we looked at it in terms of the service that we provide, and how we provide it, and what it takes to do that for the town, uh, versus, uh, it being done by a, a volunteer group at a different facility. Uh, again, there were many discussions with, with individuals from the church. I know they've had many discussions within the church and meetings. Uh, there was, there were two possible locations at the church they could do it, at the old town, uh, hall, which if you don't know it, that's that building, uh, closer to the road, if you would go up the, the drive towards the church from here on Colonel Ledyard Highway. Uh, it's not to be confused with the school building, which is right behind it, with the old, uh, school building. And then, uh, and I will say also that another part of this is part of what I have been saying, uh, in many different locations, and certainly in this room many times over, uh, that, uh, I do not believe the town can do business the way it used to do business, and the way it has been doing business. And we need to evaluate every aspect of government, and what services we provide, and whether it's appropriate for us to provide it, uh, as opposed to other agencies, other, uh, through regionalized or, uh, consolidated efforts with other towns. Uh, that being said, uh, it's cert, this is not necessarily purely a money-saving situation. In fact, it may not be a money-saving situation. However, we realize that the church in operating this, and again, it's gonna be done by volunteers, and it's, it's not going to necessarily be operated by the church, it's gonna be the church coordinating it, uh, but it's gonna be made up of volunteers from across the Uh, but the church can do different things that the town can't, uh, or would be difficult for us to do. For instance, the church has already talked about having evening hours, having weekend hours, which are very difficult for the, the town, town could certainly do it, but it would be very inconvenient to do that. Uh, we've, there have been many questions that have come up. I work, I'm, uh, I'm the Director of Social Services, I have a social services board, uh, and you see pages of comments from them about this, uh, because it is a change in the paradigm that we, we use. Uh, we've looked at the privacy issues. Uh, they will not be doing social service work. All individuals that use the, uh, the Ledyard Food Locker, and will be the Ledyard Food Locker, uh, will be, uh, will be evaluated by the town just as they are now, and we will make the decision whether or not individuals should be referred to them to use that. So again, no information is going to be, uh, transmitted to the church, they're not going to know who the people are, except for the fact that, you know, it's a small town. Uh, we, uh, kind of as a trial run, the, uh, they had the Thanksgiving and Christmas distributions of baskets done at the church, seemed to work very well. So again, it's something that, that we feel is appropriate to do, uh, it's something that we feel, uh, is something that, you know, again, uh, is the direction that the town should be moving in, in that area. Uh, there are renovations that need to be done to that building. Uh, if you haven't been in there, and I don't know any reason why you would be in there in the past years, it was used by the fair at some point several years ago, uh, it does need some renovation to do that, and the church is, uh, do, has undertaken those renovations, and the agreement with the town is going to be in the way of a lease. We're going to lease that property, uh, for use by the town, uh, being administered by the church, uh, for the Ledyard Food Locker.
Thank you for that detail, for, uh, for your answer.
Uh, I, I should just say, when I talk about questions, there are many questions that again have been posed to me by, uh, the Social Services Board and others, the LICEF Board, which is another group in the town, volunteer group in the town, that provides funds, uh, for needs in the town, uh, and I'm sure that I provided those to the council. So again, if you see something on there, or you see that there's something not there that's a question, we certainly want to look at that and make sure that we address it.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, old business. I am going to, um, make a motion to adj, amend the agenda to add two items. You're not gonna find this on your, um, agenda, um, which you're probably looking at. And, and the two items are going to be, um, the first, receive a presentation from the Board of Education regarding the Ledyard Administrators Association contract, as approved at the Board of Ed meeting of January 7th, 2015. This will happen prior to the Town Council's action to remove the con- This will happen prior to the town council's action to remove the contract from the table. Then the second item will be if we need to move to enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing records, reports, and statements of strategy or negotiation with respect to collective bargaining pertaining to the contract between the Board of Education and the Leger Administrators Association contract for period of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018. This action is taken without prejudice and the town council's right to discuss in private strategy and renegotiations with respect to collective bargaining pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 14, Section 1-200 and 1-210B. I would, that would be the motion, and I would entertain a second.
A second.
Okay, so.
To amend the agenda.
The vote is to amend the agenda. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
So at this time, we'll ask the Board of Ed, whoever is making that presentation. Thank you.
So earlier, you should have received a copy of the PowerPoint from Roxanne. Just want to say thank you for having us back this evening to again discuss the contract between the Board of Ed and our administrators association. I'd like to thank our administrators for their professionalism during this negotiation process this year. Very cooperative process. So two thoughts from the Board of Ed going into the negotiations to kind of give you a background was, number one to us was to maintain our quality team of administrators that we have right now. You've watched through the years, we've always had wonderful administrators, but right now they're a top-notch group. They're doing wonderful things. They're implementing new initiatives for us, following state and federal mandates. Really at the cutting edge. If you compare our district to other districts around the state, our administrators are really keeping us ahead of the curve. So thank you. And then the second thing is that we wanted to be very fiscally responsible with tax care money, understanding the economic conditions of the town at this time. So. So in here, we'll talk about the salary first. Their annual salary increase is two and a half percent for three years. That, and along with that is a $3,000 increase for the Leger High School principals. This was to keep us competitive with surrounding districts. Raises for the last three years to do historic perspective were 0%, 1.9%, and 1.9%. The statewide average for the next three years is 2.48, 2.55, and 2.81. At the December 10th town council meeting, we gave you a breakdown of our district reference group, which as Mr. Chair pointed out, is, our town's a similar demographic and financial characteristics. And if you recall, the administrators' salaries are below the average in all spaces. So some benefits, there is an increase in long-term disability insurance, an increase in life insurance, the modification of the longevity by adding a step and an increase of $50 in their annual payment, and also an increase of $500 in their annual tax share to the community. The biggest change in this contract was in regard to health care and health insurance. We shifted to a high deductible health care plan that has an annual deductible, $2,000 for a single person, $4,000 for a family. The town will fund half of the deductible directly to a health savings account. Our insurance advisor, who attended at least one of our negotiation sessions, projected a savings of $16,706 over our current PPO health insurance program based on this year's costs. Along with this, the administrators will pay 20% of the anthem allocation rate, which is the highest rate among all Board of Ed and town bargaining minutes. The reduction in insurance waiver payments down to 35%. And it also includes language to reopen the contract to address the Cadillac tax impacts after July 1st, 2017. The contract also highlighted some language clarification, clarified the reduction in force language, including a reduction of costs associated with reclassification. There was revisions to the bumping language, and also included a 75% tuition rate waiver for children of non-resident administrators. And then on the last page of your PowerPoint is a breakdown of summary of the costs and the savings. And since you can all read those numbers, we'll just highlight 2015, 16. The new contract cost is $64,417, but when you take out the estimated savings from the new health plan, the HEHP, and the savings from the health insurance waivers, remember that was, we reduced that down to 35%. The total estimated additional cost to the town is $42,339. And you can go, you can see across the bottom, and then subsequent years, the cost goes down also because their percentage they pay, but health insurance goes up and our savings through the health insurance waivers also increases. So who had sent us a list of questions, did you want me to answer the five of those right now?
If you could. Sure. Could you just clarify one thing?
Yes.
I can't see the screen. But under highlights of new contract, that language clarification?
Yes.
At the bottom?
Reduction force clarification.
What's, I'm sorry.
Yes, it says 75% tuition rate for children of non-resident administrators. Is that an error? I wrote on my paper waiver. So they still have to pay a percentage of the tuition, and the tuition is set by Board policy.
That's what I thought the contract said, but this says just the opposite.
I handwrote it in of my own, for my own notes. Yes.
Thank you.
So it's a 75% reduction?
Correct.
Okay.
So they would pay of the, each year those tuition rates are discussed by the Board and changed or not changed. And so it's 75%, they pay 25% of the cost. Okay, so the first question, actually, the first question, the second question you sent, do you want me to read those out loud so everybody knows?
Getting some mods from the audience.
Okay, great. So your first question was, page six of the PowerPoint presentation indicates a salary cost increase of $38,445, which is an increase of 3.35%, not the 2.5% over the 2014-15 salaries. The answer to that ties into your second question, which was, in the renegotiated contract, the high school principal receives an additional $3,000 salary increase. This would result in an increase of 4.64%, not the 2.5%. So in the, in negotiations, the $3,000 bump in the high school's salary was part of the initial negotiations. So when you do the math and add that back in, it's the 3,000 plus the two and a half of the 3,000 gives us that new number. Does that make sense?
Okay. It makes sense, but I think for the public looking at it, it's a little, maybe there should be an asterisk or something.
Okay.
But I mean, it's already out there, but it's certainly been confusing, but okay.
Okay. Great. And then number three, oh, I guess number three kind of ties in.
It does, yes.
With high school principal increase for previous renegotiation. Yes, it was. It was a recite. Number four, in addition to the additional salary increase, the renegotiated contract includes full dental and vision coverage. So, and then what did the town receive in exchange for these additional contracts? In the first negotiation, when Bob Lindberg, who is the insurance consultant, thank you very much, attended, it was discussed that the benefits of the HEHP were exactly the same as the PPO, which already included vision and dental. So in the second contract that we approved last week, we just clarified that language that was not in the one that we presented to you this summer. So it just holds the board's health insurance plan the same. And then the fifth question was, what would be the source of the $17,000 to implement the HSA plan, which is a health savings account? And per the PowerPoint, the health insurance savings contribution will come from the town. And that's because the town holds the Board of Ed's health insurance.
Does anyone, I'm trying to think of the best way to proceed here. Does anyone have any general questions? Because I am going to further run suggest we move into executive session, but for the benefit of those that are here, does anybody have any general questions?
Yes.
Okay. I received a phone call this afternoon from a resident who was concerned about, in the order, your fourth administrator, who is the high school second assistant principal and high school dean of students. The person was concerned that that job is going to be split and you will be hiring another person to be the dean of students. I explained to her that this was a budgetary item, not something that, you know, was part of the negotiations. And then she got all mixed up and thought it was, had something to do with the building plan for, the vote on the building plan for next week.
No, it's just a clear.
We are not hiring any new administrators.
Okay, that's a tough concern.
It's just a classification. When you look at job descriptions, it's just a classification. So yes, no, we do not have a dean of students.
No, I realize you don't, but they looked at this and said, hmm, you're going to split the position. All right. Any other general, yes?
On the, on the second page of your PowerPoint, you talked about you added a step to the longevity, you know, fifty dollar increase. Well, there's actually four steps in there. In the previous contract, it had two.
Right, sorry, I added the a to my.
And is the fifty dollar increase correct? I don't have deal contract.
It is. It is. And the steps originally, I think the first step was at like 17 or 25 years. So we moved that up. The first step I know, I believe, is seven years.
Yeah, seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first step, yeah, way up there.
Yeah. Which would be, I hope that our principals are with us in 25 years. Well, maybe they don't, they probably want to retire at some point, but that seems.
And now, my second question is, in this curriculum budget presentation on the December 17th, you have listed 10 FTEs with full-time equivalents under the admin line. Yet in your contract, there's what? Thirteen FTEs.
Okay. Sorry.
Administrators.
Yeah, administrators. We have 11 administrators.
They have 13 according to this contract.
Well, there's 13 classifications. So we don't necessarily have a person in all those positions with that.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Like the second.
So we have positions in the contract that don't have our fill.
Correct, and we're not filling them.
What are those?
What, which position for those?
The second assistant principal and dean.
In high school?
Yes.
So that person is going to be eliminated. That position is going to be eliminated.
Doesn't currently exist.
No?
No.
Okay, well, that's, that's from 15, 15 and 18.
There are two assistant principals at the high school and one coordinator of special services, along with the high school principal.
So there's only one assistant principal at the high?
There's two assistant principals at high school.
But one is not designated a second assistant?
Right, so there's different levels of responsibility. It's kind of like, you know, your first vice president and your first, your second vice president. They have different.
So which document is correct? This one or this one?
Because I don't know the one you're looking at.
Yeah, what is the, what is the one you're looking at?
This one?
Yeah.
This, this came out, this is, whoops. It's on your web, it's come off the Board of Ed website. It was kind of, kind of buried. It was difficult to.
Oh, I think that was Dr. Byers proposed.
I missed out there.
No, I think the 11 current, well, the deans, the second assistants, they haven't been filled since roughly 2008, maybe earlier.
That's correct.
They were reduced.
They're different salary grades.
I think the confusion might be that I was dean of students at one point. And while I was dean of students, it became an assistant principal. But the dean of students position was never officially taken off the list of administrators, I guess, in case it was ever deemed to be needed again. I'm assuming that that's what happened with the second assistant principal. So nobody knew it was hired. It's just titles changed. And so I guess there are two positions where the titles changed and the titles remain on the list, but they haven't been filled at any time.
And there's no plan to fill them.
But there's numbers, there's salaries.
There's probably.
Well, you still have to have the salary, because if we did hire that person, you would still have to have them included in the contract.
But is it true then, I'm sorry, Miss, I'm just jumping in. So it's true then that those salaries, though listed under those unfilled positions, are not included in the overall salary account?
Correct.
Right. So there's not money being asked for without, without a place for it to go.
So we're not spending this full amount? Are you saying that?
We're spending whatever the, the bottom line is on the salary account is what we're spending. But these other two positions, and I don't know why I've taken over here.
You're doing great, Luke.
But, but the important thing is, is that you were add, to add all of the salaries of the administrator positions that are actually being filled.
Right.
It would match what's being listed.
The cost and savings.
Right. And it would not be the equivalent of all of the filled positions plus the second assistant principal and the dean of students.
So that position with two jobs is eliminated.
There's nobody filling that.
There's nobody.
All right, okay, that's.
Not unlike certain cabinet positions in Washington right now. Your positions still exist.
But it's in there and it appears like.
Right, right.
Yes.
So I'm looking at a spreadsheet that was provided to us, and the number of administrators matches. It's 11. It shows there are two positions not filled. So that works out fine. Kind of concludes what we just talked about. But I have a procedural question. I have questions about the calculations in the spreadsheet. And that's a specific question, not a general question. So when we go into executive session, how do I get those answered?
That's the time to ask.
Okay.
We'll have the members of the Board of Ed here.
Okay, good.
Superintendent.
Okay.
And Mr. Steinhaus.
Okay.
At this time, I'm going to ask that somebody make the motion to remove the item from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is, and I always like to clarify this, because especially with folks that are unfamiliar with this, this is like the weirdest thing ever, and I hope that someone in some day will tell me why it's worded this way. But the motion is to reject the contract between the Board of Education and the Leger Administrators Association for the period of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018. If anybody can enlighten me on why it has to be worded that way, I would love to know the answer. Does anybody know that? It's just the way, it's the only motion ever.
State statute. State statute says unless the council rejects.
Right.
Okay, so it's the state always mucking things up. Yep.
So if they don't even know, we're actually accepting it.
That's correct. Okay, so that's the motion that's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
We're going to remove it from table right now.
Yes.
So that needs to be yes.
Yes.
Oh, thanks for that clarification.
Don't won't know yet.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
And Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, so now, I am going to, I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose. for the purpose of reviewing records, reports, and statements of strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining pertaining to the contract between the Board of Education and the Leger Administrators Association contract for the period of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018. This action is taken without prejudice in the town council's rights discussing fight of strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 14, Section 1, Dash 200 and 1 dash 210b. Second.
Second.
I would like to invite into the executive session Mr. Steinhoff, the mayor, members of the Board of Ed, Kathy Patterson. Anyone else here?
Definitely.
Okay, members of the board.
Okay.
And, and you know, I am glad to do something, and I hope you'll bear with me here before we call this vote. The LIA is here, and I just wanted to, if you want anybody had a comment they wanted to make prior to going into executive session. It's unusual to have the union representatives here, but I'm happy to, if you have any comments, be happy to hear you out.
Thank you for the offer, but we're happy to have you work for the union, Mr. Steinhoff.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We'll, we'll have like a five minute, oh, we'll vote.
Right. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
We'll take about a five minute break.
That's what I'm saying. We should do something like that.
Four minutes.
All of my like that. You can show her.
And half the people in the room is a big...
Yeah. We're good to go.
We ready? Wait a minute, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I don't know if this is going to pop back on here. Did you shut it all the way off?
Yes, so I did.
I don't know if I can add to this meeting. Is it streaming now? I don't know what to do with this. Oh, well, I'll have to stream it tomorrow maybe.
Um, we are out of executive session. Would anybody like, will entertain?
I move to remove, I, I move to table the motion to reject the contract between Board of Education and Leger Administrators Association contract for the period of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, no discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Abstained.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstention.
Motion carries. We're on new business. Anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Now, let's see, we have a bit of a consent calendar. Would anybody like to remove anything on the consent calendar? Carrying nine. Roxanne, would somebody make a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Administration?
I'll move to appoint Ms. Deanna Shepherd Smith, Republican of 1013 Long Cove Road, Gales Ferry, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending December 29, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Hinton. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I know Deanna, and I think she could bring a lot to the table.
Yeah, I agree.
She's a real firecracker.
Firecrackers are good words.
I would like to thank Mr. Brian Hinton for his service to the town in Parks and Rec. He does a great job.
And I, I would like to also mention, Good and Bad, the Leger Forum is where we found these next two people, so...
What do you mean, good and bad?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of bads upon it, but this is what's in the stuff. It's the good stuff.
You got that?
But now, we, we get people, every time we post, we get good volunteers, good solid volunteers. This is great.
Sorry, guys.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. Mar, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item.
Move to appoint Ms. Jessica L. Helton Robel, Republican, to Maid Marian Drive, Gales, of 10 Maid Marian Drive, Gales Ferry, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term, ending December 29, 2017, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Holman. Second.
Discussion. Well, what can you say about Mrs. Holman that hasn't already been said? But certainly thank her for her service.
Lifetime achievement of work.
Exactly, exactly. And Mrs., Ms. Helton is another firecracker. So we've got two firecrackers for Dawn, so...
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next.
Move to appoint Ms. Beth E. Ryb, unaffiliated of 129 Rose Hill Road, Leger, as an alternate member to the Inland, Wetland, and Water Course Commission for a two-year term, ending October 31, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Dupont Woody. Second.
The, she originally came forward from the forum on, for the Parks and Recs Commission, and she attended the forum lunch, and Mr. Cherry plopped himself right next to her and recommended she consider another commission. And she enthusiastically came forward for inland wetlands, so we really appreciate that. Another discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes, ma'am.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Oui, niens.
Yeah, before I start this next item, is it, is it out of sorts to have a guest number caller when we get to the accounts? This mic's here. The, the speed at which you call numbers, Mike, I, I just don't have it, but I'm going to give it a whirl. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate twenty... I'll start that again. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $25,021.50 from the sale of town-owned property at 1888 Center Groton Road to the following accounts: $6,000 to account 210-90305-58915, undesignated, and $19,021.50 to account 210-90305-58291, saleable town property. All right, so the background on this is there, it was a piece of land down on Route 117. It was taken in as a tax sale for delinquent taxes. We sold the property. We had used $6,000 from the undesigned account to remove a couple derelict mobile homes down on Christie Hill Road on another property that the town has also acquired. So we're putting the $6,000 back into that account from, from that, and the rest goes into the saleable town property account.
Well, if you, speakers on Saturday recommended doing just what you did, not putting it all back in, undesigned.
Oh, yes, exactly. Yeah, they don't call it undesigned anymore.
No, it's called...
I'll have to look at my slides. Slush.
No. No, it's called undesigned surplus. No, really, I got it here. We'll look it up.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
We'll keep going. But we'll, they say you don't call it undesigned anymore.
No.
Okay, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town Council Department Capital Improvement Project, SIP, fiscal year 2015-2016 budget to be included in the general government's proposed budget as contained in the draft dated December 17, 2014.
Second.
Background on this is, starting in 2006, the Town Council recognized that using, utilizing more technology, we would be going to a more paperless system in the future, utilizing IQM2 as we have. As such, we started the account with $2,000, and since then, we have sought to put, and have, put $1,500 into an account so that laptop computers would be available to all Town Councilors should they need.
$15,000.
$1,500 per year.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bid waiver to EDS Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $6,500 due to emergency repairs to the heating system at the Emergency Services Building.
Second.
Okay, so this was on our special finance meeting agenda tonight. On or about January 4th, three of the four gas-fired modine heaters in the Emergency Services Building, which is also known as Ledgered Firehouse, stopped working. The ambulance is stored in the building, and without heat, there are sensitive products and devices within the ambulance built itself that cannot get down below a certain temperature. Emergency heat was brought in, and it was also found that the flues for these gas modine heaters had failed. Three of the four had. Bids were sought immediately, and the higher bid is the bid that we selected, which included stainless steel flues for these gas modine heaters. Councilor Saum's asked the question of how these flues failed, and we will be seeking an answer, but most likely it is that water rotted them out, corroded it out, so we're hoping that the stainless steel versions going in now will remedy that situation.
Thank you.
So when we say fail, I mean, the concept of a flu, in one sense, it's difficult to say they fail, but when we say fail, what we really mean is that they're in a... any rodent state, something of that nature.
Right, yeah. From what we understand, a combination of water and vapors, post-combustion vapors, get into the building when they fail.
Any further discussion, questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. On to you.
I make a motion to authorize procurement of a new laptop in the amount of $1,080.44 from account 21010101, TAC 57300, new equipment for administrative support.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is the laptop that Roxanne uses for support when she goes home, the one that she has is currently, was purchased in 2009, and it's becoming far too slow for the work that she does, and we all know how much... Roxanne sends us stuff even when she's sick, not here, working the weekend. You send her an email and say, hey, something's not working, maybe get it back Monday, and Saturday evening, you get a response that it's fixed, so it's time to get a good laptop for Roxanne.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Landers?
I make a motion to approve Appendix B, the resolution establishing administrative control of town-owned or leased properties. Title list of real properties owned or leased by the town of Ledgered is contained in the draft dated January 6, 2015, to include the assignment of the following properties: open space located at 22 Homestead Road to the Conservation Commission, Tommy Main Cemetery to the Cemetery Committee.
Second.
So it's just a normal update of our town-owned property list that we maintain. Also, as part of this, we also remove from the list the eight properties that we had transferred over to have a...
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Just wanted two things before we adjourn. The first was, I sent you all an email that Mary, myself, and Fred went to a very excellent presentation, put on my CCM. I honestly thought I was going to be bored, but I was not bored for one minute of the session. Also with us was Kathy Patterson and Stephanie Calhoun. It was an excellent presentation. You'll be hearing more about it. Probably the highlight for... Well, not the highlight, but we got the chance to look at Avon's budget book, and oh, what a beautiful thing it was. So we're trying to get a copy of it so we can share it or show... But he never did email me, by the way, so I'll email him and see if he'll send it to me. See if he was going to email it to me.
I asked if we could buy it, and he said he would try to send it to us.
That's a cheap...
But it was a huge book, but it had everything in it. It was a narrative on the whole budget and where you're going instead of just a bunch of numbers.
And in fairness, they had worked on this for years.
Yeah.
So every year, they added another component.
That's right, yeah.
And then finally, please mention that the Town Council's November 2015 meeting will be moved to Tuesday, November 17th, due to Veterans Day. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved to second.
Motion's made and seconded. We water without discussion. We adjourn. Linda.
Dana.